Okay, welcome everybody that's on YouTube. And Jason Gutierrez, you're up.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I wanted to give you an update, I guess, on the Building Department and the Development Department as a whole. We're still seeing a lot of permits coming in and a large lead time to get folks' inspections done. Today being Tuesday, we were booking for Friday headed for Monday. So not only are the customers taking, waiting to get a permit issued, but even after the permit's issued, it takes a long time for us to get out there to do the inspections. Looking at my dashboard this morning on our software, I've got 14 permits that have been sitting, waiting for action for three or more weeks. I've got six of them that have been sitting for two, two weeks. And I've got 20 of them that have been sitting less, less than that. So there's about, give or take, 40 projects sitting there waiting, waiting for approval. We're doing the best we can, but it's having a heavy impact on the contracting community. A lot of folks are upset with it. I'll use the roofers as an example. They, they want to go in and take, tear a roof off, and the weatherman can't predict how, what the weather's going to be in four days. So it makes it real difficult when we can't inspect it for that timeframe. We have investigated some of the video inspections that Commissioner Bertollio brought up last time. Unfortunately, we investigated that through IT. We were not able to make that work. There's a number of stumbling blocks associated with the data usage and the compatibility of an iPhone versus a non-iPhone. Also got some feedback from some contractors about their paid, they paid for a service for us to come do inspections and are upset of why we're not out doing those inspections if they're having to do it via video. Essentially, they feel like they're doing our work for us. So we have ramped up as best we can to try to get to it. We pulled April's numbers. You know, uncertainty is the, is the magic word around the state and what will tomorrow bring. But for April, we did 361 inspections versus April. Last year was 256, so we're almost 100 more inspections in April than we were April last year. Unfortunately, though, we were down on revenue. So we were $27,000 with revenue versus $38,000 last April. So we did slip on revenue, but we are out doing more inspections, so.
Is that lots of smaller jobs?
That's, that would be my hunch also, is yeah, smaller jobs. This was the first month since February of 19 that we actually were down in revenue. We had been steadily climbing ever since February of 19. So that, that is a setback for us. So it does indicate some uncertainty there. It doesn't take away from the need that we need somebody here, but it does show some With that, I have come up with yet another option for the commission to consider. I know we, we first, we talked about a full-time employee and, and that was tough considering the future outlook. And then we went to maybe a part-time hourly employee, and, and even that was a little bit of a hard stretch to, to think about. So yet, I'm bringing yet another option forward here where there is a private company in town that does plan reviews. Would essentially be exactly the, the work we do. This individual's qualified where they could go out and do inspections. They carry certifications. I've got their resume here. Combined in the office, this individual has twice the certifications that our whole office combined has. He's been in the code enforcement business for a lot of years. So I have visited with him, and he is willing to work on just a contract hourly basis so they'd be an outside contractor. We wouldn't be providing them with a vehicle or a computer or an office space. They would bring all of that to the table. We could use them at an hourly basis until we get caught up, and then we can not use them. If things turn around and we get into a boom, we can use them until we can get a permanent one hired. Far as funds go, right now, we're paying our inspectors. When you average in health insurance costs and all of the bits and pieces we put into our budget, we're between $35 and $45 an hour is what we pay an inspector to go out and do, do work. This individual has stated they would work for $65 an hour. So that would, that would cover them providing a vehicle, them providing their own computer, them providing their own office space. We could use them for the hours that were needed to get caught up, get these plan reviews going, get these commercial projects, which, by the way, there is four large commercial projects sitting in the wings waiting to get started. We could use them to get started, and then when things slow down, not use them. I'd also preface this with knowing, in the near future, we've got yet another key staff member that is planning to go on FMLA for three to four weeks. So that is yet another opportunity the Development Department has moving forward that we need to try to plan for and see if we can get ahead of it.
Okay.
With that, I'd answer any questions the commission may have.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Jim Mill.
Yeah, Jason, we discussed a little bit the problems going on out west of town.
A little louder.
Jason, we, me and you have discussed a problem that was going on out west of town where the length of time was kind of a, a problem for the, the contractor owner. If, if you were able to get help, it sounded like the plant, basically, you weren't able to review the plans with architect or engineer properly. There was some confusion. And a lot of that had to do with you having to go out in the field and play catch-up. If we get you some help, are you going to be able to review those plans a little bit quicker, get, get a little bit faster response time for the contractors out there?
Commissioner Mill, absolutely. The specific example that he's mentioning is a large custom-built home west of town. They've applied for a building permit. There was about four items that needed to be addressed to get him a permit to construct. And when he would enter or give us the information, it would take me a week to be able to get to those four questions. And all the meanwhile, he's there without a building permit, can't proceed. These were key items in the building. I had already given him a foundation permit to try to get the project moving, and it was, it was strictly a time issue. I couldn't get back to him on those four issues. Consequently, it's now delayed his construction. He reports that it, it puts him into higher interest rate on his construction loan because he's there for a longer period of time and has a ripple effect on, on his side of the world. So absolutely, if we had more time, truly, his, his problem was resolved in about two hours' worth of sitting down, calling his structural engineer, and working out the, the last few kinks. And we ultimately did get him a permit on May 1st. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it does. Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Mr. Bertollio.
So Jason, thank you. So I'm hearing in the last two or three weeks, some very disgruntled contractors with getting red tag and whatnot. Got one today called, and it wasn't the contractor himself, it was one of his buddies, that he had a stamped-approved design to put two-by-twelves in over a gir, over an eight-foot garage. And we came out and told him, nope, not going to work. You have to put in an engineered beam or whatever over it. And the guy said, we approved the plans the way they were. It's the way they've always done them. And it was approved. And so the guy's only recourse was to tear it out, put a, put a new one in to get it done so he could get paid. I, you know, if we approve something, we can't change lanes when they're done and say, now we changed our mind. If we approve something, I, it's just, it's, I've heard a couple of these now, and I don't know if it's one of the inspectors, but if, if it's been approved, it's difficult for them to be late getting inspections and then, and find out that they're going to get red-tagged anyway with, well, they're not, they don't know if they're going to get red-tagged, but get red-tagged for something that they had followed the, the plans. So if we're going to step this up, I, I guess what I'm hearing is that from a lot of the contractors right now, they're getting hit with things that they've never been hit before with, and there's a lot of frustration with it.
Jason?
Absolutely. Commissioner Bertollio, I can speak to that exact one. They did turn in a set of plans. It was not an engineered set of plans, but it was a set of plans from the lumberyard. And it's a 12-foot opening, and they've overspanned the header by a third. It's, the opening's a third too, too wide. But I agree wholeheartedly. We were, we did have those plans. We did have a chance to catch that problem in the, in the beginning. We did not catch it in the plan review. I don't, I don't know if the excuse or the reason is we were, we were too rushed and got him a permit issued too quick. We should have done a more thorough review job of the plans that we had. But he was granted a permit. He did build it. The spans on that are grossly inadequate, and so we did have him replace the header. Absolutely, there is a learning lesson there that, I mean, we did, did not do good customer service there. We should have caught that in the review, and I, I agree with you. And this person, I believe, would help the quality of the reviews. We could catch that upfront. There's nothing more disgusting in construction than rework, and we, we need to correct that.
But if they made the opening a third larger than it said on the plans, that's a little bit of a problem, too.
Don't, I, they said they were going to make it a 12-foot opening, and they built a 12-foot opening. But the header that the lumberyard put in there was only good for a nine-foot opening.
Other questions?
Yeah, as usual, there's more to the story.
Sometimes, yeah.
But it, thank you for bringing it up, and it's a great area of improvement, and we need to correct that, and we need to provide better customer service there, absolutely.
Well, this guy, this contractor then would use his own car, his own truck, to go and do inspections.
That's correct.
And he could do other inspections that he didn't do the building permit on.
That's correct.
Yeah, anything.
Anything.
That we needed.
He would be a, a turnkey employee that, I mean, we got to get the contractual stuff ironed out, but once we have a signed contract, he would start that day.
Other questions?
Jason, Mr. Chairman, Jason, is there any, have you ever sat down and looked, is there any efficiencies in the way we do inspections? You know, I, I understand the, what you're saying about doing a, a virtual one. Are there, can we take, you know, I, Glen Rock doesn't hardly require anything, and Johnson County's even said that they're even going to get even, I want to say, I want to say more lax, but they're, the onsite, they're going to cut back on some of those. And as long as you provide pitchers for them, which I don't know how you feel about that. I'm a little hesitant about that. But in the total number of inspections that we do, is there a way that some of them may or may not be as necessary, that they could, if you can see it all, when it's completed, everything you need to see and not have, you know, two or three different inspections but lump some of them all together? I don't know. I don't, I don't know how it works. I'm just throwing that out.
Commissioner Bertollio, we, we have started doing some of those efficiencies. For instance, we will show up and do like four or five inspections in one trip, even though maybe the framer has called and the plumber has called, but the electrician hasn't called. We'll pick up the phone and call the electrician and say, how close are you to your inspection? And if it's within reason, we will hold off the other inspections and do everybody all at once so that we can be more efficient and get in and out of there and do several inspections at once.
Other questions for Jason?
So, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Coss?
And Jason, so we've, we have visited about fees. So I'm curious if you feel like you have direction on that, or if that's something we need to discuss. I know obviously fees are going to impact our ability to be able to add staff and grow the resource. I'm curious if we need to have a quick conversation to revisit that?
I, I think that Jason is going on that, right, on the fee increase.
My understanding is we are moving forward with a fee increase. I've got to get some of these plans out the door and some of these inspections done so that I can do the work of actually raising the fees. That's upper, upper-level staff work that needs to be done, and I haven't been able to get to it. But my understanding is we are going to move toward raising fees.
Do you, Jason, this is the increase in inspections, that increase in number is partly COVID-related, right?
In, in what regard?
Well, I mean, you've got more people out there working now. They've got more people at home, and they're doing more projects. I'm wondering if it's all COVID-related.
Ms. Chairman, if we would like to submit this, these costs, they would be tracked separately, and, and they could be part of that COVID, if that's the direction you'd like to go.
It's a little bit of a stretch, but it is a big increase when things shouldn't be increased.
We've, we've never seen a boom like this. The construction industry is, is moving. We're seeing folks that were laid off in other industries that are now going to work in the construction industry to make ends meet. So we're definitely seeing a quote-unquote boom in construction.
Okay. Everybody, I think it might be a good idea to do this on a short-term basis, and, and we just never know. We've been worried about next year's budget. We're still in this year, and we've still got to work through these plans.
So, Mr. Chair?
Brooke, go ahead. Commissioner Coss?
So Jason, just quickly, Jason, if we're going to, I, so I'm hearing thumbs up on the fees, which is great. Do you want to set a date? Do we need to post a notice of some kind to let people know, like, hey, June 1st? I don't know what your timeline would be, but I'm just wondering, is there a courtesy piece to this as well? And then the second thing, Mr. Chairman, to follow up with you, I would support bringing that person on as a contract worker to get things moving in your department.
You might, Jason, think about that, and by next meeting, you might have an idea of kind of when you could roll that out. Instead of, of an, unless you have an answer right now, but you might need to work through some of these before you get an idea.
So it kind of is a, as a process conversation, we would send that through our Contractor License and Appeals Board. They would formulate a recommendation for the Board of County Commissioners, and part of that would be a public notice. It is a rule-making activity, so there is a public notice. And ultimately, when you bring it forth to the county commission, we would give all a 30-day or so notice to all the contractors out there that, hey, be no, be, be aware we are going to raise fees. And that kind of gives that timeframe for any projects they bid and didn't anticipate for the raise to then be ready for it come that day.
So what does that mean in months? Got an idea? July? This is the first part of May.
It would be July, the second meeting in July or August.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Commissioner Mill?
Jason, so I know we're having problems with that idea of FaceTime or videos or whatever. Is there any way where inspections hung up on maybe one detail? I don't know. Just throwing something out there, faceplate for a lug panel or something. I don't, you know, whatever, just something that needs fixed, but they can't get to it right away. But you can't give them the, go ahead. Is there anything that you can do to make it so that you don't have to drive back out there where you can see maybe a picture or, or something that they can send into you that, that would bless everything and, and get it moving?
Commissioner Mill, yes, we, we do readily use that right now. So if, if we're out on an inspection and there's some minor item or a small list of minor items, we have accepted pictures showing the correction of those minor items rather than making another trip out there to the job.
Okay, good.
Ms. Chairman, I'd also like to add that I do already have some excess monies in this year's budget that are unspent in the, in the personnel line item. So I wouldn't be asking for any dollars or any dollars within my currently approved budget.
Well, I think this is one of those things that, that hopefully we'd bring somebody on, and he'd at least make his wages.
Yeah.
In fees. Okay. Any, everybody all right with that? As I see a thumbs up. Paul?
Thumbs up.
Brooke?
Thumbs up.
Forrest, I can't see anymore. Is there a thumbs up there?
Do we lose Forrest? I don't even see where.
He, I don't know whether he's clear off or he's...
Says it's connected, he's connected.
He's connected. Jim?
Yes.
Okay, so go forth with that. We can't actually vote, but there's, every, you got a thumbs up.
And, and then as far as the procurement policy and having to do any work there, I'm presuming I would have a waiver of that procurement policy for this one instance?
Miss, I don't know. That's a good question.
Be professional service.
Yeah, I think, so under the procurement policy, I mean, this is an hourly contract. We don't know how much they're going to be used, so it's really hard to say where on that scale in the procurement policy it would land. But it is professional services, and if you feel that he has skill set that you can't find elsewhere, I think it's a perfect candidate for the exception to the RFP process, if it would even apply.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and we've all approved that. Forrest, are you a thumbs up on it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If I've got a minute more, I can talk on that conditional use permit.
Like a minute.
Tonight. So on the agenda, you'll notice there's a conditional use permit. I'll get into it further tonight, but my recommendation is to table that until August. We needed to get it back in front of the commission. It had been sitting idle, so we needed to get it in front of you guys. The recommendation is to table it until August. They are working on the formation of an improvement and service district, and they need some more time, and I think that would have a, a great impact on the public hearing.
Uh, yeah, it would, because we wouldn't even hear it at all. Do you know if anybody's, do they kind of have that in mind? I was wondering if there's going to be anybody in here talking about it.
No, so we had a conference call on Monday with six of the impacted property owners in that area, including the applicant. And they were all in favor of forming an ISD, and the applicant, we divulged that we would, yeah, would recommend tabling this until August, and they were all in agreement on the, on that phone call. So I would not anticipate any public input tonight.
So then, Mr. County Attorney, then what we would do, that public hearing, we wouldn't even hear it. We would just table it before we, we opened the public hearing and then table it right then.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think that makes the most sense. There's no, no sense in going through the mechanics.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. That saved us a lot of time tonight.
Which one are we talking about?
That's number six, seven on the, tonight. It's the public hearing, CUP 20-1. It's the Douglas subdivision.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. If you're going to stick around, probably we're going to talk about a whole bunch of COVID stuff. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a quick, quick question. Yeah, I see Kim in the background. Are we going to talk about the Nordic Lodge at all?
Probably, yeah, we would here in a while. Do you want to?
Well, I just, Jason's got some ideas on it also, and...
You're going to be around for a minute? Okay, yeah, he's going to be here.
Well, okay.
Okay. COVID update. Eric, got anything for us?
Mr. Chairman, may I interrupt? We are recording but not streaming. If you want us to take a, a five-minute break, we can check the system for a few minutes, or we can just continue to record, and with the public line open.
Uh, what do you think?
Mr. Chairman, so really, what the statute requires is that the public has an opportunity to follow along in real time. So if we have the, the phone line open, I think that probably does cover us. I think the concern we had was that with the, the call volume that the county's currently experiencing, that people weren't able to get through, so...
Oh, right, yeah.
And the call, I've just got to report that the call lines open are good.
Okay.
So we should be okay.
So, yeah, we should be okay to continue then.
Okay, thank you.
Let's go ahead and continue, and then we'll put it up when we can. Thank you. And they probably heard a lot of this anyway.
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess from my perspective, not, not a ton to report. I continue to work with the Health Department, the county health officers. As most of you probably know, at the 2:00 press conference, I announced that we have been in contact with the state health officer, and she has given us verbal approval to move forward with a variant effective Friday that would allow limited in-restaurant service. So I did, I was able to get that out at the press conference this afternoon. I've already drafted that order. We've reviewed it, and it's been sent down to Cheyenne, so hopefully that won't take long, and we can, we can get things moving on, on that front. Otherwise, you know, our numbers with regard to positive cases continues to, to be good, i.e., no new positives since April 23rd. Dr. Ghanim kind of talked today at the press conference, and it was interesting looking at the graphs. We really have flattened the curve, so to speak. So I would anticipate, you know, we might hear from the governor later this week about, you know, potential further actions. I think Neptuna County is, is one of the better situated counties, especially given our size in comparison to Fremont, Laramie, and even Teton. So I, I think that the, the trend is, is towards a continued gradual loosening of restrictions. You've probably all seen the 18-page document that the Health Department put out chronicling the, the phased approach. And I think as of, well, a couple of days ago at least, we were in the moderate range. And I, I think as we hit later in this week, if we don't have any additional positive tests, then we'll be 14 days out, which is, is apparently a good benchmark. So we'll, we'll continue to keep working on, on that phased reopening, which does not only mean the public businesses, but also the courthouse, which I think will be what we need to probably discuss today. I know staff has been working together to come up with a proposal to present and discuss today for a gradual slash phased reopening of the courthouse to the public. So unless there's questions that I can answer, I think this may be a good segue to that topic.
Okay. I, I don't know whether anybody got to hear the press conference. I tried to get in on the radio, but it wasn't on the radio, so must have been TV or something, or maybe they'll play it tonight. Any questions for Eric about the order? I, on one, I have one. The state verbally okayed opening restaurants Friday, but they just haven't sent it in writing. Is that right?
Yeah, that's correct, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So I, I spoke with Anna late last night, and I reached out last night to the Attorney General's office, and she reached out to Dr. Harris this morning. And in light of the totality of the situation here in Neptuna County, she agreed that if our local health officers were in favor of this, that she would, in fact, approve that variance to allow us to open on Friday. So once I heard that this morning, I, I tweaked the order, sent it to Anna. Her and Stacy reviewed it, and I believe it's been sent down to Dr. Harris for her review and signature, so...
Okay. Did I hear Paul Bertollio? Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric, two questions. First, you said you've seen graphs. I've asked for them now for I don't know how long. They still haven't provided us the, the backup data that they're reviewing. The second one is, would the horse palaces be allowed to open? Like the horse palace and stuff?
Yes.
It's a significant revenue generator.
Right.
Probably as much as the sales taxes are. And, you know, we're opening gyms. You can open their slot machines, for lack of a better term, and have those spaced out. Most of them do provide food, but they also have a bar side to go to. If the bar sides were closed off, I'm thinking the Beacon also, to where they're, they have multi-facets. Is that included in the order perchance?
So, Mr. Chairman, can... There's just, I think, three graphs that I saw this afternoon. With regard to what I would call the adult gaming establishments, so we had a more restrictive countywide order that was in place but never got renewed, that specifically addressed those types of establishments, but it was never renewed, and to my recollection, there was no prohibition in the statewide orders prohibiting, you know, amusement centers to operate. So I think, in my mind, and I could go back and confirm this, that obviously currently there's no food that could be served indoors, and they can't serve anything at a bar or alcohol indoors at this point, but as long as they comply with the social distancing requirements and the requirements concerning, you know, gatherings, and so, and that requirement currently is, you know, no gatherings of 10 or more unless it's a building that can accommodate larger gatherings while maintaining six-foot, you know, social distancing, and that's how, you know, a store like Walmart or a grocery store can stay open is because they're larger and you have a ratio per square foot. So the short answer is I don't think that there's anything prohibiting those places from opening up on a limited basis, and I don't think there has been anything in place for a couple of weeks.
Okay. I would say it stalls at historic horse racing.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is if come Friday we get this opening, then they can actually have food and beverage and the games, but they were, they're going to have to have a plan in place that does the social distancing, cleaning of those machines, you know, all of that stuff is going to have to be done, but, I mean, to me, it's almost a cross between a gym and a restaurant. If you set it up so that they can't sit at the bar, and I haven't, other than the Beacon and Galloway, I haven't been in any of the others, so I don't even know what they look like.
Yeah, no, I would agree. I think that there's a way they could open up, and it may be something to, you know, get with Ruth from the Health Department. She's kind of in charge of consulting with, I think, businesses, and she consulted with us on basically what you need to get in place in order to safely open, so I think there is some opportunity there, and I can certainly follow up on that.
Thank you.
Other questions for Eric? Okay, well, I think last night, you guys saw the emails we sent back and forth, or I guess I sent back and forth. That problem was resolved, and they aren't going to open the inside until Friday, and I think that's what they were looking for, is just a date certain, and since now we can, at two o'clock, we gave them the date certain, so that really helps. Man, it's their livelihood, and they want to get opened up, and I'm glad that you worked that out. That was a lot of work getting all the paperwork down there. Thank you for doing that.
My pleasure.
Okay, next, Danielle, you're next on the list.
Want to start with presentation?
Eileen, go ahead.
Is that taped? Sure.
We'll just continue down the COVID examples.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Teleworkers have been declining. We currently have one in the motor vehicle department who's doing all the online renewals, which is working out wonderfully. There are two in the county IT, which will end the end of this week. I'll bring those employees back into the office. And then there's one in the sheriff's IT. I did get a request on, yesterday, the assessor's office has a request for one more teleworker, and I suggested we wait to see how today pans out before we proceed with that one.
Okay.
Been supporting the public meetings. Planning and zoning has one planned for May 12th. Been working with Jason and his staff on organizing how to proceed with that one, and with Tim on the Parks Board on the 14th. We set up call queuing in motor vehicle in early, mid-April, and that went really well, so we continued with that same setup in the assessor's office. So it's like a mini-call center, as I mentioned before in the last meeting. Each office has two call agents. 10 people, our callers can wait in a queue for 45 minutes per call, and they'll hear periodic greeting. As of about 8:30 this morning, there were 660 online request forms for motor vehicle issues since April 8th, and then 104 online appeals as of yesterday. Oops, sorry, wrong button. This is an example of how many calls are coming into the offices in motor vehicle since April 13th to about 8:30 this morning. You can see, broken down by days of the week. So the highest day was a Monday, 2,778, but they are experiencing an extremely high call volume in the motor vehicle department.
Do we have anybody working Saturday and Sunday to catch up, or did they just try to call and...
I think these are people who tried to call, and then they were unanswered calls.
Okay. That's a big volume.
Yes.
Hopefully, after we have the soft opening, some of them will keep doing this.
Yeah, some of it will be alleviated. There will, they will retain one person answering the phones, dedicated to phone answering, is my understanding, in the treasurer's office when we...
And if there's a lull, somebody else can help.
Right.
Right, yeah, okay.
In the county assessor's office, from yesterday to about 8:30 this morning, Monday, he had 865 calls, and by 8:30 this morning, there were 33. They're handling it really well.
And they took, they were able to field those calls, all of them?
Mm-hmm.
Good.
Yeah. We have 10,000 postcards being sent out in May for vehicle license tags renewals. We are going to stagger that, so that 5,000 will be sent the first of May, and then we'll wait a week and do another 5,000 the second week of May.
Okay.
That is all I have.
Any questions about that? Anybody? That is a lot of volume, and we talked about that down there when we go to open. I guess Tracy, that's why you were a little concerned about traffic. Okay, no questions? Danielle?
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, so just a couple of things that we need to discuss today. One thing is the departments that are staggering employees. I know that the Clerk's Office has brought back all of their employees, and so they're no longer staggering. We do have a couple other departments that are still staggering, meaning that their employees will work one week, be out one week, work one week, be out one week, and so we need to discuss an end date for that, or if the Commissioners are going to continue to allow that.
And that's at the assessor's office? Which?
The assessor's office is staggering. I wouldn't say it's week to week. There's certain days, they've got their own schedule that they're staggering. We do have district courts that's staggering. We've also got child support enforcement, and I don't believe the treasurer's office is anymore because they were able to spread out, so that's it.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just reading the back of the room. I guess child support enforcement is no longer staggering?
Neither.
And neither is the clerk.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so it looks like the assessor's office is probably the only one that's still staggering employees.
And he'll have to gauge that with the amount of people that come in and want to get appointments to come in and see him, I guess.
Okay.
Okay.
The next thing is the COVID-19 procedures that Natrona County approved and has been following in the Families First Coronavirus Act. We've been following the minimum requirements of the act all along, but we've been going above and beyond in paying employees their full paychecks. It's my recommendation that, starting today, retroing back to Friday, May 1st, because it's easier with payroll, that we start paying the two-thirds of the employee's paycheck instead of the full amount, as we are now.
Okay. And that's for the, how many employees? 10?
So, it depends on what they are out for. Right now, for the childcare, and that does include the childcare, we've got three out that are continuous, and then we've got three out intermittently. We've had four come back, so it's six altogether.
The intermediate, intermittently, is that the recommendation for them as well?
Yeah.
To go on?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, any questions about that?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a couple clarifying, just to make sure I'm tracking. So Danielle, just first, on the staggering, since we have just one department doing that, I think, is the question, we were doing that, allowing the staggering, but still paying their full wage when they weren't working, and it was not counting towards vacation or time off, correct?
That's correct.
And so, then the question is, is that, is that, are we going to allow that to continue in one department? Because if not, then if they're going to take certain days off, they either aren't going to get paid, or they have to use their vacation or sick, if we go away from that policy, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I think really, that's just so we understand the difference. Like, he can continue to stagger them, but he, I guess Assessor Keating needs to know that they won't be getting paid unless we're using PTO, basically.
That makes sense, yes. Thank you for clarifying.
Well, and then once we open up, then it's a different animal.
Yeah, and then it's, I mean, he can, he can schedule his employees, I guess, the way he wants to, but the question is, is before the county was agreeing to pay 100% of wages even when, if they were on a week, off a week, and now we're not going to do that. So if you're off, you're either using your accrued vacation, sick time if it's appropriate, or he can approve, or comp time, or he can approve a time off without pay, but the Commission is no longer going to be authorizing payment for employees not working.
Correct. Due to social distance.
Due to social distance.
Right, right.
Okay, so that's, I just wanted to clarify. The other thing, Danielle, on the COVID-19 procedures, so when we adopted those procedures, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they were in force until April 30th, correct?
Correct.
And so, since those have expired and nothing else has been adopted, then I think that we default back to basically the federal law, correct? So the Family First Care Act and whatever else is in place. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, but, so there is not a need for the Commission really to adopt anything with regard to that. If the county is okay just following the federal law, then we can, we don't need to do anything, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm tracking too.
Yeah. Can I keep going?
Just talk loud.
Oh, I see batteries were dead, huh? Yeah, that won't pull across, I don't think.
Is it kind of close? Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Where were we at? What was the question again?
Sorry.
No, I think I was done, actually, so...
Okay. I was going to say something else, and I don't remember.
Yeah, you're down to...
Okay, so on the third bullet point, for those that are getting, that will get paid two-thirds of their pay, the questions come up, can employees use vacation or sick time for the other third of their pay? You know, I looked at our handbook and our employee policy on vacation and sick time, and I don't see any reason why they could not. So we just want to get clarification on that as well, and if anybody has any, you know, objections to it or concerns about that.
Yeah, if they wanted to use some of that, I don't think, it's their choice whether they use that or not. You see any problems with that, Tracy? Yeah, okay.
Okay.
That's up each individual.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And one last thing, I just wanted to let the Commission know that after this last payroll, they pulled the numbers, and we're just under $60,000 for COVID fees for payroll, so that's where we're at for that.
Just under $60,000 when they were out or rotating or whatever?
And for childcare, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And it's just under $60,000?
That's correct. It's just under $60,000 that we've paid out.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right.
Good.
Thank you.
Any questions for Danielle? Matt Keating, the assessor, came in just about when we were through that. What we're going to do is, you've got some people rotating. Nope, not today.
No, that's why it came up. We haven't been doing that since we've been in our mail-in.
Okay. So you're all in.
So the point, it's moved.
Yep.
Yeah.
No, everybody, everybody's back at work except for one parent who, her daycare opened up yesterday, but she's got some concern about taking her little boy there, which is, I think, part of the reason I was interested to hear whether or not you guys would allow backfill of above, over and above that two-thirds with sicker vacation?
Yes.
So I'll make her aware of that, keep Danielle on loop, and if not, that's why I had a request for a laptop from Eileen, so she could potentially just remote in and work from home.
Okay. We'll let you guys work that out.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Nope. Okay. Matt? Here's the big one, right?
Can I sit over here or do this?
You're good, right in the middle.
Just speak into it so I can hear you.
[laughing].
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, so I have been trying to send updates when I can on the status of possibly reopening the buildings. I met with Ruth Harold with the Health Department, and she's been a great resource. And she's, yesterday, well, first of all, she went to the Clerk of District Court and advised myself and talked to Ann Valen, who's here behind us, about distancing and employees and what we need to do, and she made some recommendations, and I think Ann's going to take those into consideration, and Judge Forgy was involved in a conversation as well. And I guess she can come up here and talk about that if she would like to do that, but Ruth came in yesterday to this building, and she went through licensing and titles, the assessor's field room, the Clerk's Office, and the assessor's office. The other offices weren't looked at because most of them are just going to remain closed if we do a soft opening, so she didn't think that we need to go through those right now. She did make a recommendation that we use a form that I sent out late last night with screening employees. She thinks that that's very important to make sure that our employees, if they're sick, they still need to stay home, and they need to follow protocols and possibly call Health Department, and if they think they have COVID, go through that process still. So that form's out there for any of the departments to use. It's just a recommendation, so I sent that out. She went through the buildings, she went down to the basement with us. She, first of all, she brought up the fact that we probably need to have cleaning regularly. We need to clean the doorknobs, stanchion, the pole stanchions, the credit card machines actually, and the counters. She recommended that we might want to get the cellophane or something for the credit card machines and put that on top of them, and take those off from time to time and replace them. But she did recommend that, instead of using spray or Clorox wipes that might ruin the machines, so that was a recommendation. She did like... She did like the social distancing lines that we were trying to form, some of, I mean, we've got that down, as far as I'm concerned, down to a good starting point. Chairman, you've seen that, and I think we're, in, in the interior, we're at a good point with the departments, and we've consulted with Tracy and the Treasurer's Office, and I think it's okay for the time being. Ruth did recommend that all employees down there wear masks, for the time being, since the public will be down there. The masks, we have supplied masks to most of those individuals, and the departments have masks. They also, she also recommended that when we have the public come in, we ask them to wear a mask as well. It doesn't need to be dictated, but we just ask them nicely to help keep our employees safe and healthy to wear a mask when they come in. And if they're not feeling well, just to stay out of our building. And we can post signs on that, and possibly do add that to a PSA if we want to do that. She also liked the ideas of all the signs that we were thinking of putting in, the directions, the tape that we have down to the social distance, everybody. It's not going to be perfect when we open, but it's a start. And she did recommend also that we, if we can't have enough people, if, if there's buildup of people, that we need to have people stand out in line outside, that's probably the best way to handle the crowds at the beginning. Hopefully, it doesn't get to that point, but I have a feeling it might, the first couple of days, at least. Sheriff's Office, they have, I had verified that we will have a deputy in the building from now on, but we asked for an additional deputy, and they will assist us when, with this soft opening. I did verify that they can't be available until, I think it's Friday. They have other commitments, but they will be ready next week. I'm going to talk to Rodi and get some verification on that stuff later in the week. So, I'll, I'll keep you updated on that if need be. We also suggested a drop box, and Ruth thought that was a good idea. Tracy offered to put that in the Titles Department, and for any of the departments to use. Steve is going to be working on that, I believe, tomorrow, trying to put something in there so we can get that set up for the public to, if they don't want to stand in line, they can just drop their stuff in, in the drop box, and we'll, we'll try to process as normal. And then, we, we talked about the, the start times and finish times of the day, and we thought that opening to the public at 8:30 would be best suited for the time being, and then have everybody, the regular employees, come in by eight, so that they can get situated and comfortable in their, their spots. So, that was recommended. She did say that we could do appointment only. She did talk to the assessor, and she recommended that two people at a time come through the facility for that, by appointment only. And we had talked about possibly having the, a list provided to Sheriff or whoever's down in the basement, where we can, we can figure that out as we go this week. But, just to have an appointment and escort the individuals upstairs, either via the stairway right there, or have them use the elevator if they can't use the stairs, and just have two people at a time, and use the glass. And she did like the glass. She thought that was a great idea, and it helps protect the employees from the public and the public from employees. So, yeah, that was about the extent of that. She did recommend that we basically keep social distancing as much as possible in the building, do not get too much of a crowd in here. She said, try to document everything that you possibly can, in case we need to do a trace eventually, be it paperwork or anything, we need to keep track of all that stuff, so we know who's in and out of the building, in case we do have to do interviews and go through that. So, as I said earlier, she did recommend that all the employees downstairs wear face coverings. She didn't think that, as you go up the levels with the spacing, that that would necessarily be needed, but she did recommend that if anybody goes down there, that they have a mask on.
Okay. Well, that was one thing that, that we wanted to talk about today, and, and when we were going to open. In looking at the downstairs, if you think about it, the southwest door down here, there's a parking lot out there that'll be for the public. They can walk in that door, and then they'll go either to Titles, down the hall, the sheriff will be right inside that door. They'll send them either to Titles, and there'll be a line there, or on down to pay their taxes and, and/or get plates. Everybody thought that was a pretty good start. But, to get all of the things in place, they need to put a couple more tables in, they need to get both sheriff's deputies there. So, it was, felt that, that Monday...
Yes.
Could be the day that we could go ahead and get her opened up. Anybody have any questions about that? And this would just be the Treasurer and Clerk's Office downstairs, and then by appointment only for the assessor, if they wanted to come in and talk to Matt. Another thing I talked about a little bit, Matt, is if you, when you're talking to somebody, you might email them a schedule, say you have an appointment to see the assessor at 10:30. And then, they would have a piece of paper in order to show the sheriff's deputy. And, a list, the sheriff's deputy might have a list. But, these are all starting ideas, and we may need to tweak them as we go, each department, whether it's working or not.
It's a work in progress.
Yeah. So, we want it, we want to get people in. The, that door, when they come in, then they'll go through the offices and then go out the north door.
Right.
We won't be going in and out both the same door.
No, it's, it's going to be just one in and one out, and the, the exit will be still locked. It's, we're going to unlock the ADA door so people can come in. But, that, that door, the exit door will still be locked, so people can't just walk in and go back through reverse traffic.
Part of the logistics is having a sheriff's deputy there at the beginning, and then having one walk the halls and kind of do traffic control down through the bottom.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Brooke, Commissioner Kaufman?
Just two quickly. So, one, if we're going to, if somebody doesn't have a mask and they come in, and we're going to supply masks, I'm just curious, do we have the inventory we need to meet those needs? As I see Tracy shaking her head, no, and Matt, too. And then, two, I don't know, I know Eileen's in the room, I just was wondering, I think scheduling an online appointment, like specifically maybe with the assessor, would be so helpful. So, I'm just wondering if there's some kind of an easy integration software piece that would help with that, so that we're not having to, like, get stuck in a chain of emails, if somebody goes on and says, I'm available, you're available, I'm coming. So, just throwing that out, but I, the other thing would be PPE.
Eileen?
Commissioner Kaufman, I've worked with Assessor Keating, and we have developed an online form, and that online form will be available for him to, I haven't, I'm not sure what you decided, if you were going to call the people back, or have them call you to schedule that appointment, if you want to talk about how you're going to set that up?
Yeah. I mean, honestly, most of the work we do has been online and by phone, and that, that can really continue. You know, those that have internet and email accounts, you know, if, if they still want an appointment, we'd, we'd be happy to coordinate that. But, the major reason for the appointments was just people showing up that don't have that. They don't have an email, they don't have computers, you know, so, which is some of the reason I, you know, maybe it's more out of frustration, was I talked about putting up a realtor box in the, in the grass in front of the courthouse, just putting formal appeal forms, just, just so they'd have access to it. And I appreciated Tracy's support by putting, you know, a box up where people could then deposit them. But, reaching out, you know, doing a PSA, or Oil City News, or something like that, or, you know, letting people know electronically that they could set up an appointment, those aren't necessarily the people that I'm, I'm trying to reach.
Right. We're going to have to reach people all different ways, and it'll, but it'll spread like wildfire in the community, too, that we're open, and I think that everybody's really kind of afraid of how many people are going to show up.
Oh, I, right. And like, you know, and, and thanks to Eileen, right, we're, we're aware of how many phone calls we were able to take yesterday.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I, I can really anticipate a high demand, but I don't know how I get these people an appointment form that, that they'll have in hand when they show up to a sheriff's deputy, when they come to the courthouse, so they can come upstairs. I don't know how that works.
Yeah. Well, they'll have to call you. We'll just have to see. If you have room enough up there, then we'll have to figure out how to get word to you that somebody's down there to look, to talk to you.
Ultimately, I mean, I'd, I'd like to participate in the, having people come in by appointment only. But, honestly, at the end of the day, if we can get those, you know, a stanchion in place with tape on the floor six feet apart, you know, no, we'll, we'll control traffic through the office, you know, exercising social distancing and wearing masks and, and that whole deal.
Okay. I would, I just hoping that this works well enough, that maybe in another week, we can expand it a little bit, and expand it to other areas. So, it's definitely going to be a work in progress. Any discussion?
I was going to just address Commissioner Kaufman's comment about masks.
Yeah.
So, we don't have enough to provide. We have enough to help with our employees at this point. So, I was just going to recommend that the public, like I said, with the signage that we use, and even in the PSA, if we do that, ask the public to, to wear one of their own, bring it down, and wear, wear their own. We will have hand sanitizer stations at the entrances, so they can use that as well to help keep things clean. So, does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yes, I think it did.
Okay.
Paul, you had a question?
Yeah, so, two, two quick points. The, the notion that we can reach out through PSAs and all this stuff, I watch every single morning, people show up to the courthouse, try to go down and get their, their plates. So, you can, you can try all the technology in the world, there's still, you see them standing there at the door trying to get in. So, they're still going to have that percentage of the population that isn't connected to the internet, isn't going to make a phone call, they're just going to show up, and they're going to be frustrated. And then, if you tell them you have to wear a mask, you're just asking for more fuel on the fire. So, you look around the country, this is a hot, hot debate, and it is causing a lot of friction. So, I think, you know, you can do your PSAs, those that are going to wear them are going to wear them. You can go Walmart right now, half the people are wearing them. I think what we're doing with staff is an overabundance. Just me, you've got, we've put up barriers, we're going to have masks, we're going to have, we're doing everything we possibly can, to the point where it's almost overboard, but that's fine. I'd rather be safe than sorry. But, trying to control the population coming in, I think is going to be somewhat of a challenge. At least initially, because I think you're going to get a huge surge.
Well, yeah, they probably waited till this was, this day it's going to be open, and, and so, we're going to have to tweak it along the way. But, we, it's, I think it's good that we're going to be open in some fashion. Yeah.
Yeah, every, you know, around this, as, as you heard last night, around the state, some never even closed.
Yeah.
Some counties never closed. Some went to appointment only, so, now granted, those are small counties, small population counties, they're not Natrona. So, we've got a lot more pent-up need to get in, that we've kind of pushed back on, or pushed out a little. So, yeah, the sooner we can get open, the better. And in fact, if you wanted to even open just part of it earlier, and just say, you know, the assessor's office is not open to the public, or whatever, and when you talk about page, I don't know if you can just page the clerk's office and the treasurer's office to start with, but...
Well, they're going to try.
I know you're talking about doing that, but...
Yeah, they're going to try it with appointments to the assessor's office and, and the two downstairs, and then we'll, we'll see how it goes. Matt, you had something else?
Just, just, just a quick comment. I mean, I just want to remind you that 5:00 PM, 5:29 is, you know, close of business on the 29th, is the end of the 30-day...
Yeah.
Appeal period, okay? And, so, my other question, I guess, then, was if somebody shows up at, to the courthouse with or without a mask, and wanting to come up to the assessor's office, what happens to that person?
Well, they're, we're going to encourage masks for the general public, but not require them. Am I right with that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I could, so, I, I think that's right. I think that the statewide guidance is recommending masks. I would not recommend that we mandate it. But, but I want to take a quick step back. So, by statute, the courthouse has to be open during normal business hours, and we were able to deviate from that because of the declaration of emergency in the state, and then we passed something similar, recommending, recognizing the COVID outbreak. And then, we closed the courthouse with a specific resolution with very detailed parameters to open up with. And so, what I'm really still struggling with is, in order to open back up, we need to adopt a resolution. And while I get there's recommendations from the Health Department, I'm trying to create like a, a very succinct list of things that, that would go in in order reopening. So, for instance, we're talking about starting at 8:30, are we going to close that earlier? Are we going to limit the number of people in the building total from the public? Is it going to be just the, you know, west, is it going to be, come in the west, out the north? Is it going to be just for, you know, titles and license plates, and then by appointment with the assessor's office? But, you know, we still have other agencies, like the Guardian and Leiden program, the Public Defender program, that would probably like to and need to meet with clients, at least on an appointment basis. So, so, I, I guess I get inundated here a little bit with all of the information, and trying to make just kind of a, I don't know what the recommendation is, in terms of...
Well, you were right on, except add property tax.
Okay.
And, it's going to be a moving target, and I think those other departments, they could, if they need to talk to somebody, they would come down and get them, and that would be appointment only, too.
Okay.
I think we'd have to talk to them.
Yeah, I, I think...
Can I mention something really quick? Yeah, I, I've talked to the Public Defender, I haven't talked to Guardian and Leiden, because it's hard to get in touch with them, but he just wanted to know what we were going to do, and then he was going to coordinate with us to see what he could do to work around, and do possibly appointments as well. He just wanted to know when we were thinking of opening up, so. And he's, he's gone today, he's going to be back on Thursday, so I asked him to come over and talk to me when he gets back.
So, you could get a resolution together with those parameters, and then, then we could change it as we go, but the first one would be just pretty well what you stated.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying, and so, would we be closing public access at like 4:30, or would it go till 5:00?
Closing public ac, closing the door at fi, at 4:30.
Yeah. And then...
And then, the, the ones that are in line would keep coming in, and that would be about 5:00.
Then we can kind of move them out. So, so Tracy, from, from your office's standpoint, in terms of voter registration or marriage licenses, are you going to be doing any of that on a, on an appointment basis, or how do you want to handle that?
Well, I have candidate filing starts May 14th, but there's no reason in my mind why that can't be done over, through the mail, through the drop box, or online. I don't, I really don't see an issue with that. Marriage licenses, there are a few instances where it's an emergency. You know, maybe they're going in the military, something like that, I would, I would totally consider doing by appointment, so he's going to jail, you know, that usually happens, too. But, so, I would consider doing by appointment for some... happens, too. But so I would consider doing by appointment for some marriages, but it'd be a very limited basis. As far as recordings go, we're doing e-recordings. I told the title companies to probably, it'd probably still be going till the end of the month and they were okay with that. So that's the only thing really that I have on my plate.
And then in development, we'll just continue business as usual, doing it by phone and online and everything else?
Yep.
Okay. And then assessors and then, and then, so Tom wouldn't need anybody up on the second floor, would he?
Well, it's my understanding he's also gonna take property tax payments down in the license department, maybe like killing two birds with one stone.
Okay, okay.
But his upstairs office will still be closed, from what I understand. Matt, is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Okay, that gives me enough to put that together. And that, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I can put that together, we can have just like a, literally a five-minute phone conference adopted and then we're off and running. But the second prong of all this, I think, to the Assessor Keating's point, is the PSAs and kind of the public announcement. So that's something that, you know, we've struggled with. And so, you know, I think we need to have kind of a discussion about how we want to get that out and who's gonna be involved and who's gonna take the lead, or how are we gonna work collaboratively to do that? Because I do think that between now and certainly Monday, but probably between now and Friday, we need to get that word out the best we can, you know, probably come up with some signage outside. You know, I suggested to our clerk, somebody in a clown suit with a sign that they twirl, but, you know.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we just need to put our heads together and figure that out, so.
Yeah, the PSAs, according to the gal I talked to at K-2 and, or the, what do they call it?
Council.
Council media. We could do a 30-second tape and just take the tape over there and then it would go on all the radio stations. And as long as it was 30 seconds and it was talking about opening up, then there's no charge for that. And they would put it on periodically and when we're gonna open up. The other way is to do the morning show with the guy on K-2 and we could do that. Since I'm so far out of town, I was gonna get Brooke or Paul to do that. Brooke has been doing the other one. Jim, are you interested in that? Crickets. But you guys could get together and with whoever in here with a recorder.
Well, can I suggest one thing, too?
Yeah, man.
Is maybe have each department do like a small little paragraph of what they would like to have as a PSA and work off that going forward.
The first one, when we declare that we're open, probably ought to be a commissioner. And then, yeah, each department. And then as we open each department more, then I think they should be involved in those, each department. The elections is coming up, elections is gonna have some PSAs they need to do, too.
Mr. Chairman.
So, yes.
Kind of on the heels of that discussion, Eric, I mean, we didn't really do anything. It was kind of done with a wink and a nod as far as expired registrations and citations out there. We need to remind people that once things get going, that they're gonna have to get those caught up. But are we still gonna give a little bit of wink and nod kind of while things are happening?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Malin, you know, that's a law enforcement call. And so, you know, I think every indication I've got, although there's been no official statement is that, you know, they would certainly take into account the closures and the effect of the COVID virus on the ability of folks to get tags renewed. But I think as we're getting into May and we're opening back up, you know, probably June, July, I'm guessing that they're gonna probably get a little more diligent in terms of enforcement. But again, I can't, I can't speak for them. It's really their call.
Can I add something really quick? So I did talk to the sheriff's office, too, and they were just kind of waiting to see what we were going to do and then they were gonna evaluate what they were gonna do opening up.
Yeah, and I would hope that they, you know, give a little leeway for a while. But you're right, in sometime in June, if everything's going good and goes out, Eileen did tell us that 10,000 and some cards go out for plates. So it's gonna be a lot of activity in the next month. Okay. Okay, any questions?
Can I make one more comment?
Yes.
Eric, do you think we need to put a time limit on it, that this is in place? Kind of the way that Governor issued his orders to start with, you know, it was 15 days so that people know that this is not the way business is going to run, you know, for the next two years or whatever. I mean, should we do something like for two weeks and then revise the, if you want to call it, rules or orders of the courthouse? Because it's not, it's not gonna just be it, it's gonna be all the other facilities, too.
Right.
Library's gonna have probably open and so there's.
Yeah. Evaluate it on a weekly basis or something.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so we certainly can make it effective for two weeks. I think when we initially did the resolutions placing the restrictions, it was kind of moving so fast and furious, they were just put in effect until such time as we determined otherwise. So we certainly could put it for two weeks. There may be some ability even prior to that to loosen them more, depending on the, what phase we're in, according to the local health department, what the state does. But I think that's reasonable to put, you know, maybe a May 15th date or, you know, whatever, two weeks is, recognizing we're probably gonna revise them even prior to that. You know, as far as the library, I did talk to Lisa Scroggins and they are working on a plan to reopen. I think that based on my discussion with her, it wouldn't be till later in May. But she did have some questions and she's been working with the health department. I think they're working towards an opening. But that's a great point. I mean, our restrictions did not only affect the courthouse here, but other county buildings, so.
And that goes, what I was gonna say, too, is, so Scott Cotton asked me today as well, how things are gonna work. And then he wanted Ruth to come over there and look at their procedures and processes to see how they, what they need to do. So I, I'm gonna try to set that up sometime next week.
Well, and in your memo that you sent out, there's some screening, what do you call them, sneeze guards? They're gonna go road and bridge and agri source and so as he gets those done.
Right.
And we'll evaluate those as well.
And I just, I wanted to thank Jason and Tracy and Eileen and Steve for helping out with this. It's a lot, it's been a lot of work to look at things and I just wanted to say thank you.
Well, and Steve, yeah, Steve's going great guns getting that stuff on down there. So that's good. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have kind of a tangential issue here. So as we look to start opening the courthouse, so I think we need to discuss how we're gonna handle public meetings on a go-forward basis. As you all know, the current restrictions are nine or less at a gathering unless you can fit more comfortably. But, you know, when you look at the statewide order, it actually exempts local government administration and functions. So in theory, we could start allowing folks to attend BOCC meetings, planning and zoning, park board meetings in person. And, you know, I don't know if we're there yet or I guess I'd be curious to hear what the thoughts are and how we start to phase that in. So I think as we start to get into May, I mean, we're gonna have some more planning and zoning and park issues that are gonna be, you know, probably contentious or at least more of interest to the public and how we balance, you know, keeping the social distancing against, you know, the need to have public input, so.
I was thinking about that today. Our next meeting, it might be a wait and see, that's the 19th. We may be able to do it in person. We'll see how this goes and open it up. I think, Jason, you're still planning on a Zoom meeting next week?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. For our upcoming solar conversation, we have planned on a, the planning commission would be here present, but both the applicant and the public that want to attend would remote in. It would be an equal opportunity on both the applicant and the public to be able to participate in that. It would be a, we've set a form up online where they can click on the webpage and sign up for public comment and we're all geared up for that at this time.
Okay. But I think in that case, you're right, there's gonna be lots of public comment. So when we hear that, probably the first meeting in June, then we'll probably want to be here and in person and have public here and do the social distancing and stuff. I don't think it'll be that much that we can't social distance in this room. But by that time, I hope that we can be in person and everybody be here.
Just a quick wrinkle just came in. So the year's second tax payment is due May 11th. So there's gonna be a bunch of people trying to pay their taxes on Monday.
It's due, it starts May 11th or it's due by then?
Due, May 11th.
Due by then.
Yeah.
Your second, yeah, your second installment is due Monday. So this one particular person says he doesn't want to put a check in the mail because it's a large number and he doesn't want to pay the fee for credit cards, so.
He'll, well, we'll be open Monday.
Have a Dropbox or there'll be two people taking property taxes downstairs and motor vehicles?
Yeah, as long as the Dropbox available, it ought to be okay.
I think by Monday, that was one of the logistic things. By Monday, we're gonna have the Dropbox down here pretty close to this door, the southwest door. And it'll be available as well as they can come in and they'll be able to take tax payments down in the assessor, or in the treasurer's office where you get the plates.
And if it gets to be too much, we've talked with the treasurer about being able for employees to come downstairs in their back door and meet others if that, if it gets to be too much since it's the due date.
Okay.
As an option.
Yeah, so Monday will be pretty busy, but I think we can get it handled.
Okay, I'm just gonna text the guy back down.
Yep. Anything else?
No, don't.
Okay, so you're gonna pound out a resolution in your spare time and?
Yeah. Well, we'll get one done and we can get it formally approved probably Thursday or Friday, depending on schedule, so.
Okay.
Not, not.
Yeah, whenever, I think Friday afternoon will be fine. I would just, whenever, I'll, what's today? Friday. Yeah, it's gonna be Friday afternoon, later in the afternoon or Thursday later in the afternoon for me. But it wouldn't take long. We, could we do that, give it the high sign, just do it by email without a meeting?
Um, Mr. Chairman.
And then ratify it later?
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, probably just jumping on a call is the easiest. I mean, we do it by mail, email and that technically is outside the purview of the Open Meetings Act. But it could be a one-item special meeting, no need to take even a public comment, we just jump on, approve it and jump off. So I don't, I don't see that being a problem.
What are you thinking, Eric, tomorrow or?
Yeah, I mean, tomorrow, Thursday or Friday. I mean, I don't think it, I don't think it should hold up our efforts at messaging. I think it's more of a formality, quite frankly. So I think we need to work together to get the message out and then we just need, so that we have a nice paper trail to get that in place by the end of the week, so.
Okay, and then we would ratify that then at our next meeting, the 19th?
So, Mr. Chairman, if we have a phone meeting, then there's no need to ratify it, it's just done.
Okay, okay. All right. Now, you need an executive session today?
I do, but I did have one thing that came up during this meeting that's not exec. So I received a message from the city attorney's office on the CNFR contract, and if I recall, it's on the agenda tonight.
Yes.
So he received back at 2:00 this afternoon, a markup from Kent Rutledge, who apparently is the attorney representing NIRA. And city attorney's office indicated that there was pretty substantial changes to pretty key language in that agreement having to do with indemnification. And then he alluded to something with Spectra having to come to the table. And so I haven't seen it, so I don't know, but the city is going to pull it off of their agenda for this evening to approve. I would recommend doing the same, just for the mere fact that it's a tripartite agreement and it looks like they're gonna be continuing to negotiate on some of the finer points. So I want to let you guys know that before we got too far down the road.
The hits keep rolling in. Okay. Yeah, I think it'd be easier just to, well, let's pull that off and what, just pull it off, we won't need a table, just pull it off.
Just pull it, yeah.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, so I do need a, an exec session for legal updates. I don't know, there was a question about the lodge up on the mountain, too, so I don't know time-wise if we have time to get to that, but certainly didn't.
That's.
Mr. Eric?
Yes.
The lodge and also opening campground.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tim is out here and he's next. I just wanted to make sure how much time Eric needed to, for an executive session if we needed one. So Jason is still here and Tim's here and you can give us a report on campgrounds and lodge and all kinds of stuff, whatever you know.
I will report that I finally got a haircut after two months, so.
You look a lot better.
Thank you.
Chin up a little.
Oh, yeah. My proposal for the campgrounds is different from the state parks. This is after talking with the deputy director for the state park, Commissioner Petolio and myself, as well as working with the BOR. My suggestion is that we open up this Friday with some of the restrictions being taken off as far as the, basically the restrictions are taken off on the 8th for self-quarantining. I say we just open the campgrounds up without saying residents only for a few reasons. One, we don't have the ability to enforce that. Two, the state parks are doing that on a reservation-only standpoint, and again, we don't have the ability to do that. Our parks, for the most part, campsites are apart from each other. So my suggestion is we open up this Friday and with the suggestion that campsites be 10 people or less, which is our rule as it is now. But we really enforce that. If campsites are trying to get together, that is something that we can enforce from the social distancing factor. All camping areas should be expected to ensure proper social distancing as is now. And then all campers should understand that when they come, that they will need to be prepared to bathe in their self-contained unit and not expect the bathroom at the trailer area or the bath house at the trailer area to be open. That we will open that at a time still to be determined as we see some of this, these things develop. All other restroom areas will be open and clean for the most part as is expected. So we will also, I've got a long list that I've adopted from the state parks that they have put out to their staff when it comes to general instructions for cleaning, communicating with the public about the continued social distancing, encouraging hand hygiene and various things like that. We will make sure that we give to our staff and encourage them to go by this, these general instructions for cleaning. So that's my suggestions for the campground.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Tim, are you gonna establish a cleaning schedule for the bathrooms or whatnot? Or how are you gonna show that they're being regularly cleaned?
That's a very good point. That's something that we can actually put in as far as putting signs up that say this bathroom was last cleaned on. That's something that we can put in place. I appreciate you bringing that forward.
Okay. Other questions? I think that all of this stuff we've talked about, after we do the resolution, that ought to probably be on the website. I mean, that's another place people look. I think, Tim, when you, when you get what you want to do with the campgrounds on, let's get that on the website as well.
Okay.
And so that that's another place they can look.
What we can do is I can do a blog about this in the morning. And then Eileen, typically when I do a blog that's newsworthy, she makes sure that it gets on the website. She's pretty diligent.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
About getting on that. And then I've also got, uh, I've had K2, um, Oil City News, and then even, uh, Wyoming News Now has already, uh, they've been asking for days and I asked them if they could wait till after this afternoon and I can make a statement tomorrow.
Okay. Okay. Other questions? Rook?
But Tim, did you say Friday?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, okay. I just thought, well, we can grab it from the county website, but our website's getting an awful lot of traffic around that too. So I just want to make sure that we're marrying what you're saying on the Visit Casper side, so. And then that's the day that the governor lifts, in theory, the restriction on the 14-day quarantine, correct?
Right.
Yeah, good.
And that's.
If that for some reason.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. If that for some reason is extended, would we revisit this? Are we like, because we can't enforce or we're just like full, full steam ahead?
If the governor, if the governor would say, I'm going to extend the 8th to 14-day quarantine, does that affect you?
That's up to us as a, as a group. I, I guess we would say, let's relook at it. But I, I would still think it would not.
Yeah.
Um, just because of the way our campsites are located.
Well, and that's for somebody from out of state too. And that would make more people in-state go camping.
And Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Eric.
Well, I was just going to say, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, so remember that, that self-quarantining i- is a, basically a strong recommendation from the governor. It really lacks, um, enforceability. And, and that, that was clearly, um, articulated by the AG's office to us that, that the way it's written, it's, it's really not legally enforceable. Um, the other thing is, is from an enforcement standpoint, just because you have Colorado plates doesn't mean you just came from Colorado. I mean, you could have been up here visiting family for a month, you know? So I think from an enforcement standpoint, it would be very, very difficult. And I think as long as we have the proper precautions and, and, and recommendations in place, you know, I, I hate passing stuff where we can't enforce it. So I say, what's the point?
I would say that'd be the same if we had a North Carolina plate, just like.
Well, I was going to say, yeah, a green plate is still a green plate, huh?
Well, yeah, I mean.
But segueing off of Eric's stuff, how, how, what he's got in place and, and how our campgrounds are designed, basically, uh, that we're going to have that social distancing anyways in general. And then, as you said, part of the parks regulations is size. So we've got that to fall back on as well.
Right.
So I, we're fine.
Yeah, I think so too. I, I think that's great to do it.
I think the biggest challenge that I'm going to have in the next couple of days, and that, that goes with all of us, is getting the word out to the people to say, you do not have to do reservations. The only ones that we have reservations for are the full hookup RV campgrounds, uh, because one, as soon as the state made that comment about reservations, our phones have been blown up with that.
Yeah.
So we'll, we, that's where I, if I go through the local news outlets and our website to try to get that out more.
Okay. Any other question about parks or about the campground? Okay, thanks for doing that. Uh, okay, anything else on that from you?
That does it for that.
What do we got on a building on the mountain?
Well, uh, the way I have put it out to public, um, and thanks, Jason, for going out there with me, with the, and this came out in the Oil City News yesterday, I, uh, had an interview with them. They, they've been asking. Um, the best way we can put it now is with the, uh, the crazy amount of snow we've had this year. Record amount of snow in February and, um, we even had some snow up there yesterday, but thankfully it's not sticking at this point. But it just brought, brought it to note that, uh, from a structural standpoint, that building said, hey, we've got to do something about this. Um, the dormer, uh, for the, uh, the best answer for now, the dormer is separating from the building and causing more structural damage. And I believe that most of that has come from the amount of snow load that we've had. Um, and then I think the, the quickest way to look at it now is, um, Jason and I have, uh, pinpointed a structural engineer that can get with us in the next two and a half weeks. And we'll look at that and then determine next steps. And we'll, uh, base our action steps from there on that.
Okay. Uh, yeah, we'll see what he says and, and, uh, and then I talked to Jason earlier about maybe even get a mover and just, just see if they could move that.
And we have been able to locate a mover in Laramie, uh, that has done some pretty crazy moving things. So that's, that would be an option to talk to him after we talk to the structural engineer.
Well, yeah, and even see if the building's even worth saving. But yeah, and it wouldn't be much of a move. Just move it out of the way or move it a, a little ways.
Right.
Get a proper foundation and then just put it down. So it's not going to be moving very far.
Right.
Get it off that spring.
So, uh, the structural engineer within a couple of weeks, so by the 19th, maybe you'll have another idea.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to chime in on, on that structural engineer. Uh, again, it's professional services. Uh, we believe we've located the most qualified structural engineer to go up there and look at that. Uh, he's told us on the phone it would not exceed $750 for him to go up there and look at that.
That's great.
Uh, make sure we have your, your thumbs up on that. We'd like to proceed with getting him up there as soon as we can. And, and with your blessing, Tim, we can get ahold of him and pin him down on an exact time and date and we'll get him up there.
Everybody ought to thumbs up on that one?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, but I don't know if you had more on, for that, for Tim or not?
I, I think that's it for right now.
I had a question for you, Tim.
Okay.
Um, so we're opening up the campgrounds. Are you set with personnel for that?
We are, yes.
Okay.
Um, uh, I've been assured that we'll be ready for this weekend.
Okay.
So.
Good.
Yep.
Uh, as far as the PSAs, uh, Paul, are you ready for that? Or Brooke, you want to come down and get a couple of them designed up? Maybe Eric?
Sure.
I was just kidding. If, if you guys don't want to, I can do it. If, but it, yeah.
See that finger, Brooke? You're in.
Nope, that way.
You all right with that, Brooke?
Yeah, yeah. Is there somebody on the, on the staff that's kind of running point on that that we can work with? I can't imagine that Townsquare won't, if we just run down there, won't record it for us. It seems.
Well, we could, but there's nobody in the building. I think we got to have it recorded. Uh, and you might check with them. Again, call, call down here to K2. I couldn't look up Townsquare, I just called K2 Radio.
Yeah.
I, I'd be a good, a good point person for that.
Yeah, and, and.
And maybe we ought to have like Matt record one because he's going to get really hit.
Yeah.
During this little short period.
I think.
On how to handle it.
Yeah, I think the first one ought to be like the commissioner and, and maybe Eric and, and Matt. However, we can do that and word one and then practice it enough that, man, you can really just roll through it in 30 seconds. Uh, then, uh, they could run that for a few days maybe and then, then add whoever we need to add on a priority list. Probably, you know, we're going to talk about titles, we're going to talk about, uh, license plates and taxes. Probably taxes would be pretty close to next because that's the 11th. Uh, if you need to come down here, uh, we'll accept your tax payments starting the 11th. Yes.
They're, they're, talking with the treasurer's office, the biggest concern is that somebody wants to pay in cash.
Yeah.
They do not want that in the drop box. They want to meet with them and accept that cash personally. So that, that's very important to that office.
Yeah, and get a receipt and all works, right?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, so, I mean, we'll be open the 11th, yeah?
So we can get started on it.
I might have pushed harder for Friday if I'd known that, but that's all right. We can make it happen. I.
So, so we really don't want them to use the drop box to drop off their property taxes?
Uh, we do if it's a check, but not cash.
Not cash.
Oh, well, I don't run around with that much cash.
You have a big tax bill. Okay. Uh, no, that's good. And, and, uh, I think we ought to do that probably tomorrow. Uh, if you could come down, Brooke, call these guys and see about getting that done.
Yep, we can, we can look into it and get it done.
All right, sounds good. Anything else on that? Thank you, Tim, for being here. Danielle, did you have anything? Nope. Okay. Uh, anybody else got anything else? Boy, we, we have time. We really do.
Well, we need to leave this meeting and start your exec.
So, yeah, motion to go into exec.
Yeah. Okay, any, last call, anything else for the work session? Okay, is there a motion to go in exec?
Come in.
Brooke moved.
Second.
And Jim seconded to go in and have an exec session. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, do we want to take a short break? How do we want to do that? Let's just take about a five-minute break and come back.
And then they, everybody has a Zoom invite for the exception.
Oh, we'll hang up from this one.
Hang up from this one so we can just clear it. And then I'll start the second one.
Yep.
Is that a yes or a no, Brooke?
Yeah.
Yeah. Bye.